Okay. Your motion to adopt the agenda.
We have one addition to the agenda.
With the addition of the Justice Heritage Committee.
I make the motion to adopt the agenda with the permission of the Justice Heritage Committee.
Your second.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, so in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your motion to accept the consent agenda.
I will be accept the consent agenda as amended.
Your second. Motion made in second, so in favor?
Aye.
Good. We move on down to guest speakers, communication and informational items. We have one. Here. Housing needs for the tomorrow night. From 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here at Town Hall. Discussing on the housing need.
Who's hosting that, Ray? Pardon? Who is hosting that? Is that the town? It's not the town, is it? It was the town?
Well, Jeanne and Beth Goodman.
Beth Goodman from?
She's with that Economic Department.
Okay, that's right.
Economic Development.
Okay.
George Middleton, FFW Flags.
Am I next?
Yeah, you're next. Come right up here.
Thank you, Mayor. I have my commander here, too. Veterans of Forum Wars, Blaine Cliff to the post 47 is proud to be part of the community of Lakeview. And we will have to give back to our community as we are able. The service that we are the most proud of is assisting the community show our pride in our nation on select holidays by displaying the American flag. We are asking for a donation of $25 per year will enable us to set up a flag to be honored in the location of your choosing. Please remember that the intent of the service is to honor our nation's flag and as such, we will not be placing flags in disrespectful locations or in inclement weather. If you're interested in taking advantage of this service, please contact either me at (541) 417-0220 or Commander David Swart at (541) 219-2071. And we need as much help as we can get at 6 o'clock in the morning and at 5 o'clock in the evening as we are getting shorthanded. And we have three routes. And we try to get them all by 7 o'clock. And if you have any questions, please call me. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll be happy to make a post on social media, kind of like I think you did last time. And I can guarantee you guys will get people out there volunteering.
Nikki has helped and she is one of the great ones that we really appreciate her and her team.
I have so much to use.
Thank you.
Totally agree with you.
Next, we have the April 8, 2019 Lakeview Flood After Action Review. Let's see if you're... Is that a den, huh?
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, you're on here twice.
No, it's just one handout.
One handout. Well, we have a handout there. You want to count it? So if you wanted to, continue over to the emergency plan.
You want to go first or you want to go with your stuff?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So we did do an after-action review on the flooding event. I mean, we all know we Lakeview flooded pretty good. We were pretty lucky. We did have lots of help, a lot of help from our federal and state partners. I will send this out. I haven't done a scan yet, but these are all the notes from the after-action review. So it was pretty substantial. I mean, nothing major, just that we needed to work together. The biggest key point was trying to get people, we've got a lot of worker bees in our community, trying to get them, the leadership to come to the Emergency Operations Center and help develop the planning for the next operational period, help understand ICS, incident command system and all that stuff. It kind of, the feds and the state felt it was kind of dumped in their lap. No. It's kind of what happened, it kind of wasn't. I mean, we were trying to work through it, but it's just a training issue that we need to address. And I'm working on bringing some training here this next fall, winter, spring to help train on ICS, emergency operations, center operations, how that works, who fills those positions. So, I mean, it's hard when we spend our day-to-day stuff being the worker bees to drop what we're doing and say, hey, I'm gonna go make decisions and try to help get the work, the help you need to get the job done. So it's kind of what I'm hoping to bring in the future. So next time we have floods, it'll be a little more smoother than what it was. But, I mean, we made it through it. We definitely need to tweak it if we didn't make it better for next time.
I don't know when we moved down the lips, he got really made a difference.
So yes. It did set up for that kind of thing, bringing the state and the federal partners in. They do it with fire and ICS is truly just managing people. It doesn't matter if you're managing a flood, managing a wildfire, an earthquake, a disease, it's still managing people. So, and that's really what it's all about. And yes, it helped a lot. And I would just like to bring more of the town, city folks and county folks and use our federal, state partners to train those folks. So, because if this would have happened in July and say it was an earthquake, it would have been a different situation. So, so we need to definitely build together and work on that.
So you have a organization coming in to do some training this fall, is that my understanding?
So, yeah, so, Organize Emergency Management has training. And they'll come in for free and train like ICS 300 and 400. Like the prison here alone has 10 people that need it. We just need to get other folks like the managers of other agencies, you know, public boards, fire chief, those folks, you know, make sure they're getting ICS 300 and 400. The other thing is that's important and that's a little checkbox if you apply for federal grants. We are NIMs compliant National Asset Management System. We're NIMs compliant, so you check that box, but they'll check because they keep track of those training record and they're like, so you're a fire chief? Does he have 300 and 400? Yes or no? So yes, I'm working on bringing that training here to help get everyone, yeah, I'm just hoping to get everyone there. I know it's hard, ICS 300, 400, the five-day class, three days for 300, 200 for 400. But it's really good stuff. And it's a one-time class, so.
And you'll keep us in the loop on what?
Yes. And I'll try to help coordinate with you guys on timeframe. They're trying to, I'm trying to get it September, they're pushing it to October. October's hunting season. And if people aren't hunting, I'm covering for other guys that are hunting. So I'm gonna try to get it at October. I may push it way back to January. It's an indoor class anyway, so.
Yeah, September's a little bit earlier in sports.
Yeah, I want to get, stay out of October and stay out of November, December with the holidays.
That's great.
Does that training involve, what if you have a group of people that are from the community that sign up to be volunteer helpers? Will that training cover them as well?
If they take it, right?
That training is free and it's available for everybody.
Okay.
It's just a week long.
Right.
And it actually, ICS 300 and 400, you take ICS 100 and 200, you're like, what was this class about? That's all online. Or 300 and 400, you're sitting at a table, you're going through scenarios. And it's kind of where the road meets the road. And the other big part of the training is trying to bring in emergency operations center functions and what that means and who does what and have it all work together.
Yeah, keep us on the loop. Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions?
All right, thank you, Jan. Next, John Kogar, All-Town RV Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in 2010, we were applying for a zone change to allow the RV park that the Ruby Pipeline built to continue as a community park or a regular Oregon licensed RV park. During that process, there was one half of a block that was, I believe inadvertently left out of the process between when the town council voted and when it went into an ordinance. We discovered that when we came to apply to the Town Planning Commission for a site review on it. So it was too late to go to the, come back to the town and ask that this be added to that original zone change. So we went through the zone change. I've been busy getting the park ready to go. But now we find that Red Rock is in quite a bit of trouble. I spent an hour with Jeff Marinac on the phone. He called me asking about the RV park, how many spaces we were going to have, what other accommodations might be available in the town. They, because they're running so late, they're looking at so many people coming. The whole town is going to be covered with RV spaces. And the contractors are even looking at Valley Falls and Bligh, probably Paisley, as places that they can get into some parks. So I'm asking the town to look at the information that I provided. When, when the town agreed with me that these, that this property should have been included, it was voted on. When it went through the process, there was half a block of 95, Block 95, and half a block of another one called 93 that didn't make it into the ordinance. Two years later, in 2012, we discovered, I sold the property to, a piece of this property to the Suburban, or the sanitary, Lakeview Sanitary out there. And in the closing, we found out that that property wasn't included in the zone change. I came back to the town council at that point. I think, Sandy, were you on the council at that point? I think you were.
I definitely was.
So they voted unanimously to include this half-block of 95. Well, I'm embarrassed to say that I didn't figure out that the half-block of 93 wasn't included at that time. So I'm asking you to include it so I can go back to the Town Planning Commission and go through that process again to get that legal for another 36 spots for these guys coming in.
You're gonna need every one of them you got, that's for sure.
Yes. I left a large buffer between where the subdivision that I had was, we sold off these lots years ago. I left, geez, over 300 and some feet from them, two, a block, a city street, and then another half-block there as in residential zoning to give a buffer zone against the RV park, even though I didn't think that there was much problem between RVs and trailers. So, there's a lot of room in between them and there was no discussion. We've got other planning commission members here that don't remember any discussion about why either 95 or 93 should have been left out of that original program.
So both of those are out and written down, right?
95 was put back in by ordinance 842. But I goofed up and didn't realize 93 wasn't in it. So 93 was never talked about.
So you want 93 included?
Please.
And then you'll go back to the planning?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to have a site review.
I did have Janine go back through the records today, the town planner. And basically, there was an annexation and the condition that use, the use remain as originally approved by Lakeview County, any future use requires land use applications and decision. That's what the annexation is. The comprehensive plan and zone map amendment, Mr. Kogar's application did include property in question, Block 95 and 93. The record shows that the initial planning commission recommendation was to not approve the application. Subsequently, the town council remanded the application back to the planning commission. In the remand, the planning commission recommended blocks 98, 99, and 100. The town council approved the above blocks, including Block 95. While the town attorney at the time clarified what the applicant was seeking, the record shows the motion did not include Block 93. The site design review application does not include Block 93. So a planned zone map amendment is required to zone the property to highway commercial. That's the first step back to the planning commission. Second step is a site design review application is required to expand the RV park to include Block 93 if a planned map amendment is approved. So that is what our planner went through this afternoon. She went through all the files, all the records, and that's, and Jeff Hedlund also concurs with her on this because I know that there was a couple of planning commission members that you had talked to. And going back through the record, one voted no and one didn't. So, anyway, you need to go back to the planning commission through that process.
Would you produce the original tape of that meeting?
If it's around. I have no idea where it would be.
Well, see, there is the issue, Mayor. We've been trying to find the original tape that would say this one way or the other. And that tape is not available. It has not been able to be found by Christie or Don. And Block 90, half of Block 95 was left off the last time when we went through this, even though it had been voted on. I believe what happened was between the time that it was voted on to be included and the time that these minutes were written up, that it disappeared off, you know, clerical error. They left off, when the minutes came out originally, rather the ordinance that put the half-block of 95 as part of this, that they agreed to, that was left off of that ordinance. We had to go back in and the town council produced the number 842 that allowed number 95 to be sold as highway commercial property. Why would they have left off 93? There was no sense.
Having gone through a very similar experience, I mean, that's, I don't know that the records, there's got to be a statute of limitation on records for something like that, I would imagine. I've looked.
And like I said, she went through all the records today, all the written records today. The only thing that we haven't found that may be in the basement somewhere is, is the tape. That is the only place it can be. And I don't know that she's looked for it or not, but her recommendation is to go back to the planning commission through that process.
Remember I told you yesterday?
Well, I have no problem. I have no problem with obeying the law. This is just, given, given what we have, we are facing, number one, with lack of space for these people.
Right.
Number two, the fact that I've gone through probably six meetings now so far on this, the legal description hasn't changed anywhere in this. It's always been the same piece of property. And there's no discussion in those meetings on, from the town council or, or from the planning commission, there was zero discussion saying that either that half-block of 93 or the half-block of 95 should not be included. So why isn't it?
Well, it just says that the original application was not approved. And then it went to the town council through appeal and they said blocks 98, 99, and 100. And that is what is in the record, the written record.
That's right.
And the only way that we can see anything different is to go back and try to find those and they may be destroyed by man.
And 100.
So, you know, that's all I can go on right now. So, is what the facts are right here.
95, 95 was approved?
It was later.
By the town council?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but when it came to the ordinance that showed where the zoning was, the property that went, that was zoned from residential R2 to the highway commercial, 95 wasn't on there and neither was 93.
Right.
I had to go back to the town council and have that redone.
Right.
Bring 93 added in.
93 wasn't, I didn't realize 93 wasn't there. I thought that, you know, my fault. I admit that.
So what was used while the pipeline was here? 93 was not used then?
Yes.
Oh, it was. Was it used?
Of course it was.
I don't know.
I can show you the map. Everything from Reverda to the east side of U Street was used. I had 200 spaces there. I didn't, they did. This is all set up. It's got the water, the sewer, everything sitting there. We just had a very extensive electrical test done to prove that a mouse didn't chew through three feet of rock to get to the insulation on the line. We passed it. I know the council can do this because they did it for Block 95.
I think I could make a suggestion before the council does anything further is that we wait until our attorney is back here because he agreed with the town planner that we need to go back to the planning commission.
Before we even vote on it?
I don't think you can. I mean, I think it has to be.
Well, see, that's what I was curious, whether we can vote on it or not because it hasn't gone through the planning. It's got to go through the planning before we vote.
Well, if that goes through the planning. It's okay. I understand. I was hoping for timings of the essence with these people. And it's, I think anyone can see that it was obviously a mistake in this because there was no discussion in the planning commission or the town council. And they actually, they actually didn't turn, turn down the concept of changing the zoning to, from, to highway commercial from R2. What they objected to was the timing of it. They wanted to wait to see what the RV park, the effects were on the community at that point. So then, I, because they voted that application 531 down, I had to take it to the town council to appeal it. But they didn't vote against the idea. They voted that they didn't want to do it, they asked me to wait six months. So they turned it down.
They can't wait six months.
Well, we can't wait six months, but you can, you can have them camped out of the, up the canyon. You know, we need to, we need to get some things done in a timely manner, but your choices. Thank you.
So if you will help, do some research on that.
Yeah, I think we need to. I think it's only fair to, John, that we do go try to find the tape downstairs.
Mr. Hedlund have another appointment? I tried to talk to him about this several days ago so we could help iron this out. But he was unwilling to meet with me because he had a conflict of interest.
Well, he does. He is a town attorney. So he does.
He's a town attorney and I've met with town attorneys for 50 years that represented other people. And they never had a problem talking to me about town business when it had nothing to do with any other business.
I would like to add this as a discussion on our work session on the 28th. And we will try our best to find that information.
I think we have to move that up sooner than that. We're gonna try to get this through before they start coming in because.
How many lots do you have available right now that are accessible for RVs?
We'll have about 80 approximately.
Okay.
So we've got a good start.
Yeah. So, you know, on the 28th, that's two weeks.
Yeah.
So unless I find this up before, because it's gonna be going and digging through all those boxes that you guys have seen in the basement.
I want to know who's drawing the short straw.
No.
Sorry. I'll come hang out.
Christie couldn't find it either when she looked back in 2016.
So, oh, she couldn't back then, so.
No.
Wow.
And it could have been because that was pulled out for some reason in 2010 or 2012 when the town okayed the half-block of 95.
John, do you remember the actual date of that meeting?
To have that information, you know, the stuff that we did.
Well, I just wasn't sure which recording because I'm wondering if maybe it might be still on my computer.
Well, quickly, I thought you couldn't find it.
I didn't find that one, but some of those in Christie's files, I know other files of hers.
Okay. We'll work on it and then we'll have a work session on the 28th. But that's if they have cameras.
Or sooner than possible.
If you find it.
If you find it. Yeah. This is a huge issue.
Right.
And the town obviously, you know, seeks to benefit from Red Rock being developed. I mean, this is, and again, it kind of concerns me that we're at this point right now.
I know, I found out about it yesterday.
I mean, I thought we were good to go on an existing, previously used piece. You know, obviously, I'm not the town's planner, but I, I mean, I do think that if it was notified correctly, then there should be some options here. I mean, I understand if, if there really was no notification, I mean, DLCD could, you know, take us to the wringer on this. But we, we'll do our due diligence to find the records and then, but legally speaking, I mean, you know, land use has laws and if they're followed correctly, then, then there should be a correct decision that's, you know, defensible and can be upheld with, you know, I don't know, I think that we need to look at.
So it says here that the examiner had something in June published? That included 93?
Absolutely. Got the copies of.
June 40, have the copies in the files.
Yep.
So, maybe there's a clerical error and that's what we're gonna say.
I truly believe that's all or it wouldn't be trying this process.
The one in the paper.
The one in the paper.
Yep.
So, but like I said, I just knew about this from yesterday.
Right.
So I think that, I mean, if we can find his documents and work on that, we can have a special meeting next week, I'll do what I can. Because I know time is of the essence and I know we need to do this. I just, going on what our attorney and what the planner had told me right before I came in here an hour, three, at three. So I'll do what I can to find, try to find that. But if Christie didn't find it, you know, I don't know. But we'll do what I, what we can do, so.
The other, the other thing that came up that I'll make you aware of in my conversation with Jeff from Red Rock was that they are so afraid of what might be happening here with the number of people coming in, including those that don't have RVs, that they're looking at putting a man camp back up. And that, the location for that was originally across the street on County Parkway. One of the issues there is that so much of the infrastructure was destroyed when they left. They took out all the electric transformers, the, just cleaned the ground back flat, basically. So under their zoning, they can go back in and do it, but the cost and the time that it's going to take to get that infrastructure back in could be very well prohibitive for when they actually need the stuff to show up, man camp. I'm sitting there with the infrastructure available under R2. I know this is a planning issue and I'm going to bring it up with them, but it would make the most sense to me, besides my money situation, bringing somebody in to utilize my property, we're sitting there with the infrastructure, the sewer, the water, and either highway commercial zoning or our residential zoning that's already in place, that this man camp could go on. And that's a matter of applying for the permits and having the electrician basically hook it up. We just had this system, which is, was built three, the engineer that designed it said that they even designed it stronger than what he, built it stronger than what he recommended. We've got 15 KB running through that whole park. So we can run all the trailers that they put in there and their man camp.
What is man camp?
Oh, it's a dormitory system.
So would it be travel trailers as well?
No.
Who's willing to put the pipeline in and? Who's willing to put the pipeline in and just build it?
It's a mobile hotel.
Uh, looking at our map on the wall though, I'm still concerned as to, we're talking about the half, the east half-block of ninety-three. And looking at that map from a distance, it seemed like it's also blocks sixty-eight and sixty-seven, the west half of those two blocks that also was not zoned to highway commercials.
Right. We left that, we left that residential.
Yeah, just to, just to have a buffer. But knowing that we've got an issue here, I mean, if you do need to go through land use again, I would highly recommend using that or at least applying for it because, yeah, I know it's already gravelled. It's, it seems like the infrastructures are there and it seems like, you know, even that half-block of ninety-four, that, that east half of ninety-four is not zoned commercial.
Right.
But you've used that, they used that during the pipeline.
It's ready to go today.
Yeah, it's ready to go. I would just, and, but if that was left out of land use and I'm not sure what the town stance is on people using it again now, but infrastructure's there. We need to be using this. Anyways, we'll do our, we'll check on this and we'll get back to it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Okay, move on down. We have to put up information down in the kit room in a minute to hear. All right, let's look at department reports real quick. Uh, we'll go to nine-one-one, Scott Ellington. He's not here. Okay. Fire Dennis is not here, but their reports. Public works, yeah.
I don't have anything to add to it unless someone has a question on what is there.
Um, did somebody come see you about sandbags? What you can do about them?
Several people have asked for it.
And I just got a message from today about that too.
All right.
Somebody picked them up.
Cause I sent somebody in and I said, you gotta talk to Jeff.
Yeah, I could tell people they can have a reasonable amount of sandbags.
This guy wants seventy-five or something like that. I don't know.
We probably have fifteen hundred to two thousand stacked and we have quite a few available, so that seventy-five would probably be considered a reasonable amount.
Did you need assistance picking them up or are they all been picked up?
They're, they're right across from the shop now only. Yeah.
Okay, engineer, Dale Anderson.
That's me today. Um, so I have a couple...
Oh! Wait, that's what I was, okay. I was looking for Darryl. Okay, go ahead.
I have a bunch of disjointed things to update you guys about, so if you have questions, just stop me before I go on to the next one because there is no relation between the things I have. So first, the waterline extension on Cadramis is a go. They should be laying pipe on Monday. We marked it out and all the other locates for the utilities are done, so that's working out well nicely. That's going ahead nicely. Uh, the well seal on the LPGO thermal well, uh, we are getting the contract documents together right now. The permits are in place, so we're good to go on that. Um, we have noticed or people made us aware that on Second Street, there are some deficiencies in the asphalt, i.e. there are some potholes forming. Um, we're gonna take a look at that and see what we can do. Um, and we are gonna send a letter to the original contractor who maybe put in some faulty asphalt. I do not know yet. Um, okay, due to mostly the floods, we've had above-average groundwater infiltration into the treatment ponds, um, which means we're gonna have to start submitting an I and I report. It's an infiltration and inflow report. Um, and we'll do that with Jeff and get him set up on how to do it and go from there. Uh, and we might, as in Anderson, might do some further studies to the infiltration itself and see if we can mitigate, prevent anything like that in the future. Uh, the pool cover's been ordered, so hopefully that'll be in before the summer starts. Um, we will need to do at some point, probably late summer, uh, and we'll, we'll liaise with Jeff for this. Some maintenance on the creeks. Uh, we need to fix some flood control issues that were there. Um, and again, this is stuff that you just need to fix it every so often. Um, as well as we will have a big party cleaning debris from some of the basins that are built up. And once those are filled, then again, the water's having nowhere to go in the basin, so they'll just flood the town. Um, what am I running there? Oh, so this is an idea that Red Rock is having that we're working to see if we can do this right now. They will require a tremendous amount of cooling water for the processes over there. And I know that the town water system does not wanna give them our drinking water for that. Um, and so what we're trying to engineer and thinking of right now is reusing the sewer water in the wastewater treatment ponds. So there's no reason we can't use that water. Um, one of the things we're checking on is two specific heavy metals that could corrode their equipment. If that is in the water, if that is not in the water, then what we'll probably try to do is a nice circular pump system. So you pump out of the poop pond into Red Rock, pumps right back into that pond. And so that way, there's no waste. We don't need to build anything new. And other than Red Rock, paying for a pump and a lot of piping, that would solve that issue and it would take, uh, it would keep the town from losing any of our good, beautifully colored drinking water.
And not in full effect, there would be no additional water lines coming in, an output that would be...
Yeah, exactly. No.
To overflow our sewer.
No, because what we're doing right now is, you know, we're connecting to municipal water system, right? And that's the, the work on Cadramis, but there will be nothing else. So it's basically just a circular, like a fish tank, you know, like a pond pump or something. So...
So I know concern is the sewer.
Yeah, exactly. And so, uh, depending on what the chemical analysis say, I think there's a pretty good shot that, that we can work that out and I think that's advantageous to everybody involved.
Yeah. Um, I have a question.
Yeah.
And that would not impact the irrigation water for the school, right?
No. No, absolutely not. Um, so that water itself, it would be returned in the exact same state that it was taken from because it's just cooling something in it, so it's not mixing with anything. It's just like going around their pipes and cooling that. So it wouldn't affect anything like that. Uh, and the last thing I have is that we have a funding meeting set up with, with IFA uh, in late August, I believe it is, to work out the master plan stuff, to try to get ourselves a, a treatment facility for the iron, the manganese, for the color in the water. Um, and funding is, there's another funding system that we are still waiting to hear back on uh, to arrange meetings with that, but we are moving as quickly on that as we can. Uh, questions about any other town engineering pace? Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah?
Do they need to change you on the pool?
We're, we're looking at it.
Oh, Jips. Jips got that. Almost ready.
We're, we're closed, yeah. By the time we need it, it'll be, it'll be open, yeah.
Yeah, they've been working on it.
That's good. Just wanted to make sure of the pool cover.
Just report there and also they've got the pool cover in order.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Where did you have anything to add to yours?
I don't think so. Plenty. Did you guys get mine online today?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Just, just for, the pool covers are being talked about Rotary, right?
Rotary and we put in an alliance app also and that will cover most of it. I think the final number was twelve thousand something.
I don't know anything about the money.
And it depends on the, the roller. If we had to get another roller, so...
These are commercial gray.
Yeah, they're, they're, the ones that used to put there, I don't know what they were, but they, they are blue on the top. They have a, a lining and then black on the bottom and they're a thicker warranty.
I'm, I can confirm, um, that Rotary is putting the goose chase funds forward that this year.
So what is the total cost?
We appreciate that, yeah. The cover's almost thirteen thousand dollars.
Oh, is that? That's not bad. I thought it would be, I mean, we're originally thinking it would be quite a bit.
If we can reuse the roller system we have.
Right.
Oh, okay.
And, and when I talked to them, we weren't sure. I hadn't had it exactly. He said eighteen to twenty is not out of line. And I was also including the little kiddie park, or kiddie pool up there. I don't think that was part of this order. And I think they probably should order that. I don't know.
The splash part?
No. Uh, there's a little kiddie pool come over here, so gotta follow up with that.
It would be nice if it was as warm. It does, but in the past though, it's a warmer.
You need to change your girlfriend.
It can be obviously...
That's where most kids want to be happy.
Anyway, I'll check on that.
I need a little...
Just be respectful.
Oh, I don't need to read them?
No, not the whole thing.
Okay. All right, now we'll move on down to old business, Lily. Uh, we'll see you back. You'll have to, you'll have a chance to go with the contract. Okay, um, in the matter of the proclamation on June fifteenth is Child Abuse Prevention Month in Lakeview. And then also on June fifteenth is Elder Abuse Awareness Day. I want you girls in the office to remember that when I come in every day that week.
Me too. Now you're pushing it. You're kind of a fetus.
Thank you, folks. This is driven by AARP membership, because I got one of those.
Okay. You're not, you too.
I got a facility request, Lakeview Swim Pool and Lions Park, can I leave on?
That's on June second. Is it, they want the, is the pool open then or will we...
The pool won't, but they just want the park. But they, you know, the...
Oh, they don't want the pool. No.
Access to the restrooms and electricity.
Right. And I told them, you know, we don't reserve it, but get up there and I'll check with Jeff and make sure that the restrooms and electricity is all...
And that's, sorry, can I add, can I add to that really quick? And that's the big trail celebration as well, so there will, there will be quite a lot of people up there. So we're looking at two to two-fifty up there, so the, the run will end there and the celebration for the dedication of the trails will also have a ribbon cutting that we'd like you guys to attend as well.
And that's the, um, no access to the bathrooms and other areas?
We'll have a barbecue going. Clint will barbecue as well.
Help me in.
It's a big day.
Uh, probably do need a motion.
We can't reserve the park. I mean, we don't reserve the parks anyway.
Oh, that's true.
So disconsensus.
Okay.
We'll come to the public.
Yeah. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's move down.
Just remind us of the time on the ribbon cutting.
It's on now.
The ribbon cutting, the ribbon cutting, I think will be around eleven or eleven-thirty and we'll send out invitations when it gets a little bit closer.
Okay, um, we got the Lakeview Swim team request letter from Amy Hutsie. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read it. I went through there. I don't know if they do this same thing every year. They want to paint the bleachers and clean up the weeds, the debris. I don't know if they're gonna do it or who do they want to do this.
Well, it's requesting help from us, but they wanna know what we're going to help with and there's a list of things that need to be done.
Painting the pool house.
Buddy's crew was gonna help do some of that.
I'm trying to find paint right now.
So you have been in contact already to find this out?
Uh, that's, that is what Amy said and, and that said that Buddy has volunteered his crew to help clean up whenever we're ready, so.
It'd be nice if it was done prior.
Shaving down what in seconds.
Yeah, so utilities kinda over this, right? I mean, the pool, so I mean, you know, this request, I think is completely reasonable. We've got a whole lot going on this year. Under our new liaison...
Segments?
Your pool.
We are over pool. And, you know, over the years, it's, I know we've had, we've struggled with keeping, you know, uh, lifeguards through the end of the year. I absolutely one hundred percent want that pool open around here at the time. Like, it, there is no reason in my mind that we do not stay open through Labor Day weekend. You know, we hire people, we tell them, look, you need to be there. I mean, we, we are losing money on that pool. The more we keep it open, the more we're gonna make. I mean, it's pretty simple. So to me, it's gonna be definitely one of my things that we sit down with that crew and say, look, you gotta be here.
Here's one thing you're gonna run into, Darwin. A good portion of those kids all have pigs or steers.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but we're gonna have to work around that a lot and we're gonna have, we're gonna need to figure it out. And, um, if we need to, you know, um, get more people then, you know, register to be lifeguards and cover some of these other times, then
I think we can.
we will find volunteers to make it happen. I think we just need to advertise more to figure it out because some of our hottest days are well into September. Now, I'm not suggesting we go into September, but, um, other than Labor Day weekend kinda thing, but.
I agree.
I don't know. It's just one of those things that's always bugged me, someone who goes up there and uses it a lot, to see it closed so early in the year. And then there's lots of days because of weather that were closed, so. I counted it one time. It was like sixty-six days total that we could be open. And then we're only at like, at like fifty-five or something that we were actually open. And when you do the math, it was like, we had to get a lot of money in there. We stayed over a thousand and we, of course, we're not making a thousand dollars.
We had those unhealthy air days last year.
That hurt a lot and I understand that, but that's why I think we just need to figure out and, you know, when we make hires, we try to make sure that they understand.
So I think we have sixteen that we are gonna have that have been interviewed and ready to go. So then they'll have their training and we'll let them know the work out of scheduling.
Yeah, that's part of the scheduling that we needed to figure out, because that...
We'll have to get a manager up there because we lose our managers just before Labor Day because they leave for school.
Well, and that's about hiring. That's why...
No, I understand. I'm just saying that one of the managers is a pool, or is a college student.
Yeah, so...
We'll see what we can do.
Yeah, so really, my recommendation is to, and I don't know if you need consensus on this, but the requests that they're making are reasonable. I think we need to, you know, go down this list and see what Buddy can do and his group and then the rest. We've got funding in our heart fund to help take care of some of this, so let's just get it done.
It, it also needs new filters for the, uh, it's about five thousand dollars, so money goes pretty quick.
Oh, yeah. How long do those filters get for?
They've been in there two years now, they're, you know, yeah. Paper cartridge.
And they're two. How many do we need?
We need six.
Six filters?
So that's part of this. We gotta figure out this cost.
We've got it down there.
You have?
I have stuff in the pool. Just reminded me.
We need consensus on that, but...
Well, there was also her, the hour she wants to use the pool in there. So I want to have any discussion about that or not, but...
Well, if the request in half an hour longer than last year, the kids swim practice, the coincide the water will expand. Cut of even less swimming.
Does that, did that work out last year with water?
No. In fact, one of the things that I've talked to Lynette about it is what happened last year is the kids bumped into the women's aerobics. And the women aerobic people had not a good thing to say about kids being in their space. And I said, if we need to expand, we could go earlier in the morning with the swim team or something in order, you know, they said, well, it's cold. Well, if the speed changer and the... Yeah. I mean, if we have to do something, we should do it earlier in the morning. So that's what was passed on to the new lifeguards too.
Wow, it's really late. It's pretty late.
I haven't talked to Nathan yet because he's not...
Oh, no, I'm gonna forget.
And that, because I didn't talk to her. I talked to Lynette when she was gonna relay that. So.
So that can still be discussed in the, um, table for the, for the time slot?
Yeah.
But the rest of these requests are really...
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that's true. And, and when we talked to Lynette, it was, we've already got the schedule out there. And if we need to change anything with the little kids in the swimming team, at least, earlier in the morning with the older swimmers, kids come early. So, and so they won't interrupt the women's aerobics or the aerobic class.
Okay. Uh, move on down. Funding request to one, three thousand dollars. Or request for economic development.
I recall we, we give this each year, but it was twenty-five.
Twenty-five and they ask for three this year. And one thing different, they're going to do this year, um, in a succession plan for, for Betty, they're going to hire a bookkeeper to be, um, kinda taking over the bookkeeping work that Betty does. So that's why they're asking for an additional five hundred is to help with the acquisition.
Okay. So you want your motion on, on their request?
We pay through June and this is for July movie board. So we can work with it five hundred million budget somewhere. Yeah, I, do we need motion on this one at least?
Yep.
I'd motion to approve the score, the request of three thousand, if not about twenty...
I have a second.
Twenty nineteen twenty.
One second.
Motion to make the second, throw it in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's move on down to Western Heritage. They're requesting money from the thirty percent of the general fund account, of the amount of five thousand dollars. Those funds are for the statue project that was on the corner of, uh, Workton Mutual for our Christmas tree, was that before? And we'll stay there. So the plaque will be placed to the statue with the main contributors. So, we're gonna need a motion on that one.
How big is the statue, do you have a picture of what it's gonna look like?
I don't have a picture of the exact one, he's working on it, it's artist by Thomas out of Lomax, he does all of the horseshoe art for sisters. And it'll be a man-made boulder, it'll stand about six feet tall, about four feet wide, so it's really not that imposing. It'll be in front of the Christmas tree, and so it'll be out of the way of the sidewalk or anything like that. Um, and it'll be the two cowboy boots made out of horseshoes on top of the boulder, it'll light, light up from dusk till dawn. So it'll be right on that, on the main road, where people can see, drive by, touch, feel it, it's the kick off your boots and stay awhile statue. So it'll be right on point with the town branding, and, um, Western Heritage, Bradan just had to leave to go to a geological features meeting. But, um, it's, uh, it's a great, it's a great project, and we are hoping to make this a great partnership and as a gift, you know, to town to have something of that attraction that people can take a picture with and see and, and visit and walk by. That's on point with our Western Heritage, our authentic town.
What's the total cost of the statue?
The total cost is ten thousand dollars.
And who's paying the other five?
Uh, we get a couple of different agencies, we have Travel Southern Oregon donated two thousand towards it, and we're working on funding for the other, if you give us five, seven. And then we'll be talking to, um, uh, we haven't asked, we'll be asking the county commissioners, and then we'll also be asking the daily statue fund. They've already written a letter of support for that statue, so we'll be getting the remaining funds from them.
So who will actually own it, the Chamber?
No, the Chamber isn't, the, the Chamber's not doing the ask, it's the Western Heritage Group.
Well, okay, so they will own it?
Yeah, it'll be, it's a gift to the town, it'll be.
It'll, um.
Do we need to worry about?
It's on Washington Federal, um, private property, so.
On private property, but.
Um, Washington Federal will actually, I guess, it'll be permanently installed right there by the artist.
So would the town then be responsible for maintaining it if it gets birds fly over and all that stuff?
No birds are gonna fly over that statue.
There was a tree there.
That's true, that's your tree.
Um.
Don't throw it back at us.
Um, the maintenance of it, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, it may have a hair pretty fast. So the, the maintenance of it's pretty, pretty small, it's made out of horseshoes, and it's a man-made boulder, um, there will be three landscaping lights to it. And we're working with Pacific Power on, on funding that process, so that Pacific Power will probably do some of the funding, I think it's like eighteen dollars a year or something to run the lights. So it's not enormous, but they will be needing to be tended to, if those lights go out, they're not sold or anything. Um, and any other, probably maintenance will be Western Heritage, since they are the ones leading, leading this and, and getting this going. It'll be installed the third week of August, right before roundup, and this will be the first, uh, a couple of statues that they'll be bringing in, um, to town and the county.
Does Washington Mutual have power available there, or will that be?
There is power that runs, um, because the Christmas tree is lit up every year.
Well, the Christmas tree was lit up for the town's, uh, streetscape project.
Yeah, so there is power there, um, and so we're working with Pacific Power, actually Todd Andrus is working with us on that, on how to, how we can use that and, and get that going. It's not a huge watt.
They may be able to take some power off of one of those poles right there, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's what they're kind of, that's what Todd's kind of thinking.
We, we went overhead for the Christmas tree, and that's not a long term.
Yeah.
So, but it would be something that happened, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're working with them on that part of it, but, um, we think it would be a fantastic addition to town and, um, you know, we have the tall men, we have the, but they're very difficult to take pictures with and actually see who's in the picture. So, um, this beautification project is just that, it's a, it's a town pride and excitement project that includes showing your funding going towards town beautification. And, um, you know, just really giving something to the residents that they could be proud of and take pictures with and see lit up in the town. And see the thirty percent of the TLT tax going towards something they can touch and feel and see.
So, thank you for this information, I, the thirty percent, I understand, we have that budget already, like, it's, it's in our budget, like, it's spent, like. Am I, am I wrong in saying that?
It was in, no, it's in its own fund, so we have.
It's in the fund, but we never actually, I mean, I, I see the thirty thousand, is what we.
And we've actually gotten thirty-eight thousand for that portion, so.
So there's more than what we anticipated, which is fine, but I thought that thirty was actually allocated somewhere within our budget, where we're trying to.
In the general fund, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the general, going to something, but, but that's why I'm still struggling with this whole seventy percent. Because I don't understand, and I, you know, I know the DOJ, and they're gonna fight us on every little bit of this, but to me, seventy percent, this is tourism, this is showing something that you're gonna go and take pictures at, that what, how is that not tourism?
It's not tourism, because their definition of tourism is bringing people here. So if you lived fifty miles away from here, which is what they consider a visitor, because you have a six-foot tall statue somewhere, it's not going to get people in their car and drive here and stay the night.
The tall men.
It's like a fort, where it's like a giant.
People go and take pictures of it.
It's just not a big enough margin to where they consider that to be a tourism project.
Yeah.
Um, your thirty percent fund, you have thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand dollars in there, that's, that's your general fund, you can use that for town beautification. Or any kind of Main Street project, or, you know, bench it.
Which is general fund, yeah.
For absolutely anything. Um, with your seventy percent, obviously, is a bigger, bigger pot of money, um, that they want to go towards tourism, and they have all those laws and all of that stuff, your thirty percent, um, can really go towards, you know, doing something big for, for your town, so.
So if we, um, when you did the budget, that's, you didn't put anything into that account at this point?
I mean, any expenses? Any expenses, yeah. Well, I have to look at the budget again, but, um, we put the gen, thirty percent into the general fund for, you know, to help us with our whole.
Because, you know, I'd like to think of other things we could use on that.
I, I gotta say, I one hundred percent love, and I'm really excited at the idea of what this probably will look like, because I've seen some of the mockups and stuff, but when we have an issue with sidewalks right now, we'd be using that money on it.
We have a sidewalk fund?
We do, but we also have. No, a lot more than that, yeah. So, you know, I'd like to see, I mean, we have, you know, sidewalks that we don't want on, or we have paint building issues. I'd like to see myself, maybe some other organizations pitch in first, and see what, what's kind of left, because that's a big chunk for us, I think.
Got two from not travel Southern Oregon, and the commissioners, you don't have a commitment?
I'm for it.
We don't.
Well, I, I'm for it, but I'm not for paying half of it, you know.
That's kind of what gets me, I guess.
I guess it's, my opinion.
So, I appreciate the update on how much is in that fund, because that helps a lot, when I thought the thirty's totally, I mean, to me, it's allocated, it's somewhere.
Yeah, but it's kind of added, yeah.
You know, contingency fund, we didn't just add thirty thousand in contingency, so it's spent, but knowing that there's thirty-eight, that gives us some wiggle room, close to the end of the year. So what I'd like to say is, you got some time, how, how soon are you gonna order it?
No, it's order, it's, it's being made.
You've got a bill pending with no actual sponsors yet.
Well, we had, we, we thought we had funding and it fell through, so the Western Heritage Group is trying to get funding to complete the project. I mean, we've already been paying, we pay, um, we pay two thousand dollars, we have to pay two thousand dollars, we already signed, and we've actually gotten this statue at quite a good deal. So he's willing to come, he's installing it, he's making it and bringing it over that we don't have to pay for. So it's, um, it's also a really good, it's a great feel-good story for travel organizations.
So why was that location picked? Because personally, I don't like that location.
The location was picked because it was originally built, basically, for a daily, for a daily statue, so.
At that location, maybe that parking lot was like set up for a statue?
Right, right where that, yeah, right where that concrete is, and there's those two big planters, and then you have your tree kind of right behind it. That was built and originally for a daily statue, and they couldn't raise enough funds to make that happen, so it's kind of sat waiting for them. Like, Washington Federal had us make sure that we get our, an okay from the daily, yeah, so we had to talk to them, and they were all for that statue. Um, but, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a pretty project, it's not sidewalks, and it's not a pool cover, but your pool cover was, is being helped funded by Rotary. Goose Chase, it was also asked for by Seroptimus, so I guess, um.
I'm glad you gave me more information, because it just seems like a traffic jam if people go and stop by and see this statue in the middle of town.
Well, it's off the sidewalk, it's, so it's completely off of any.
I'm just missing the point here, I think, but.
I think.
I mean, I think you put it down at MC as a much better spot out the open to see it.
Because traffic jam is the least of our worries. You don't take stumps with like the Indian head, like some of us do, or random things, like a big fork out in the middle of nowhere, some of us like do that stuff, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
So could, can I add something?
Yeah.
So these folks have gone to other organizations, and they have made requests, and they have, you know, that they have been successful. They did come to Rotary, and, and your project at the town, um, won their, their, um, bid, so, or whatever you want to call it. So they, they have been actively trying to do this, it's not, you know, they're, they're not coming to you first, they've actually been doing some things, and as you know, how things go, that cycle for the, the service clubs won't come around again until next spring. And they're, all of the clubs, they don't really realize their money until late in the summer, sometimes early fall. So the, even if they get chosen to, in, in the Rotary Club, if you get chosen for the Goose Chase funds, you don't really get the check until September, sometimes October, depending on what happens with the Goose Chase, so there, I just wanted to make sure that you understood that they have been actively doing that.
And we're aware of your marijuana tax fund and how, um, I've looked up the statutes for that, and there's not much, you, a lot of towns do donate that to the police, but they also do, um, town beautification, we, I talked to Roberta about which fund I should specifically ask for, because it's not a seventy percent fund, so. A lot of places do like to turn into bad habit money into town beautification, so like lottery funds and smoking pot is a good way to turn into a, a gift to town, like, that's a, it's a, it's a give back where people can actually touch it and feel it, instead of, you know, saying, well, I think they fixed an alley with that money, or I think they did the, you know, I'm not really quite sure, but this they can some, this is a good, it's a good PR move too, yeah.
Right, or on their, um, wheelchair, probably doesn't appreciate the statue near as much as the sidewalk, or the person walking down the sidewalk, perhaps, so.
Well, it's not on the sidewalk at all.
No, I mean, where the phones, you know, where the phones are used.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The need for sidewalk.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not trying to diminish that at all, no, obviously, it's the easy.
Yeah, that's the idea. I just, I feel like their priorities are kind of.
So, what's, do you have an update on, I would try to find it, but what's our update on the marijuana tax?
Um, I don't have an update on the three percent, but I think that was at nine thousand, nine or ten thousand right now is what we have.
The state sharing?
Uh-huh. It was nine.
Are we, can't just pay your, okay, before July, yeah?
Yeah, the April payment.
So it's roughly three thousand will be.
Yeah, April payment and the June payment, or what, but it doesn't come until July, but it reflects back into the, that we're in.
Pretty bring it in on that one.
Break you one hundred percent.
We're ahead of the other.
Three percent got added after the vote of November, so.
I don't have a, but I did, for the new budget year, it's gonna have a separate line item, just so we can track the better, I just wanna track the better.
So what do you, you guys want to take?
I prefer everybody's opinion, I, I, I do like the, you know, the points that you're making, that you guys have looked at other.
Mm-hmm, we've gone to every service group.
Every group?
Mm-hmm.
And so that's what you're having, you've got maybe a few pending, how many are you truly pending?
The county, maybe.
The county, but they're not gonna be able to do.
So we're getting a plaque on this, okay?
Yeah, we're doing, yeah.
Lakeview helps support this.
Mm-hmm. And we don't want a huge plaque, like, we could open it up to, um, private donors that would want, since it will be up for so long, we could open it up to businesses and, and people that just want to donate to the statue and, and be on the plaque, but we would rather have, um, I guess, the way that, the, the way that we'd look at it, we'd rather have it come from Western Heritage to town and the county as the best gift received that way, instead of, you know, thirty names on there, which would still be fine.
We would definitely do that.